Power outages, fires, and possible injuries. And to make matters worse, the amount of damage to the lines and equipment caused by Mylar's yield longer restoration times. Don't let metallic balloons ruin the party. Never release balloons outside. Keep them secure at all times and dispose of them properly. Your safety is in your power. Welcome to the special city council meeting of January 24th, 2023, being called to order at 3:02 PM. Clerk Kabajin, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council members. Asatryan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. May we have your report?
Closed session item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, apologies. You called to order the special meeting, so maybe we could recess the special meeting and then call to order the regular meeting if that's okay?
That's right. We don't, sorry.
No, it's okay.
All right.
It's out of order, so that's why.
Yeah, let's, we don't have to, we will recess.
We'll just recess the special meeting, yeah?
So let's call to order the city council meeting. And let's have a roll call for that, please.
Council members. Asatryan.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian.
Here. So for record keeping, let's note that at 3:02, we recessed the special meeting that we had called to order. We already took roll call. We'll come back from closed session to resume that meeting. Right now, let's read the closed session items into the record.
Yes, closed session item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure litigation pursuant to paragraph subdivisions D two and E two of section 54956.9. One potential case. B, conference with real property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubek Olanyan, John Tachtanian, Bradley Calvert, Jason Bradford, Michael J. Garcia, Shuwa Vang, and Gillian Van Miden. Property location, 212 and 216 South Brand Boulevard. Negotiating parties, Museum of Neon Art. Instructions to the negotiators will concern the price and terms for the lease of the property.
All right, are we anticipating reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, we don't anticipate reporting out on either item. And for the record on item one A, the facts and circumstances giving rise to the closed session included considering the potential for litigation under the California Voter Minds Act.
All right, with that, we will recess to closed session and we will be back to resume the special city council meeting hopefully soon. Thanks. Our special city council meeting, for which we had done the roll call and then recessed, we are going to take some of the items out of order. The first item, which was a Public Works presentation for CIP bi-yearly update and accomplishments, we're going to push that to either next week or when we will be able to fit it into our schedule. And then that leaves us with items two, three, and four, and we're going to take these out of order. So we'll take item four first. Clerk Kabajin, can you please read item four off the agenda?
Yes, item four, community development regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Association's calendar year 2022 annual report and calendar year 2023 budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. A, motion to accept Greater Downtown Glendale Association's calendar year 2022 annual report and calendar year 2023 budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District.
Great. Mr. Olanyan.
Yes, good afternoon. Mayor Kasakian, member of city council. As I was writing to the record, this is an annual exercise that we go through for the city council to pass the motion to accept these plans. And I'm going to turn it over to Ani Pogosian, our economic development coordinator, to introduce the item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and members of city council. Before your review this afternoon is the Greater Downtown Glendale Association's annual report and calendar year 2023 budget. This annual update brought forth to you today as a requirement by administrative government code. The Greater Downtown Community Benefit District, managed by the Greater Downtown Glendale Association as a nonprofit, has successfully completed another year in the expanded district. The Downtown Glendale Association is comprised of board directors that represent different property interests in downtown. I am pleased to share that the association welcomed dozens of new retailers and tenants to the district, including Amazon Style, A1A Chicken, John Restaurant, and many more. Staff continues to work closely with the Greater Downtown Glendale Association on a number of priorities that will ensure the long-term economic vibrancy of downtown. These exciting initiatives will be further elaborated on later in the presentation. The DJ has submitted a 2023 draft budget with an estimated income approximately over $1.9 million. Funds have been allocated on a number of priority areas, including sidewalk operations, marketing and promotions, administration, and reserves. And now I would like to introduce Rick Lemmo, president of the DJ, who will provide specifics and highlights related to the annual report and budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ani. Thank you so much, mayor and council. This is the 10th time we've given a report. I'm very proud to say this is our 10th anniversary. And the Downtown Glendale Association has really weathered, much like other businesses and groups, a tremendously crippling pandemic. But we have come through things relatively in good shape. If you look around Glendale, people are walking outdoors, and they are filling our parking lots, and our stores are filled with people. Very, very much so, retail is on the increase, and the reason is some folks are a little burned out of shopping online, and they want to interact with people, and that's a very good thing for us. And because of that, we hope that dollars are flowing into the city coffers from sales tax revenue. Staff continues to work closely with the city, most specifically not only the community development department, but Glendale PD. We deal with vagrancy issues there, but I want to put a little bit of a spotlight on how we work with the city of Glendale Community Development, because they're also a board member of ours, and they probably work harder than any one board member does as far as advancing the causes of the city of Glendale. We're very excited to work with someone so, with a group so involved. We're working to activate and promote Artsuck Avenue, and we've been very successful year after year. This will be a big year. I'll explain why in just a moment. We work to keep sidewalks and streets clean and attractive, and as you, I'm sure, are all very aware, that's the toughest job, and that's also the heaviest majority of our budget. We also hope to bridge the gap between the north and south in downtown Glendale. And our new initiatives for 2023 is one of our biggest, which you'll all be invited to on March the 8th, International Professional Women's Day, promoting the hotels, rooms, and visitors as those grow here in Glendale, looking at a new autumn art on brand. And one of the areas of focus for the autumn art on brand will be also autumn art on Artsuck. Updating our holiday decor, which we improve each year, but we're growing it now, and further activation of Artsuck Avenue. Implementing the Bridgeline, which you may be familiar of, the project over the 134, and working closer with our city partners to always increase the desire, not only for retail for Glendale residents, but also to continue bringing other shoppers from other areas in the valley. I'm not going to mention the other cities that we worked so hard on bringing shoppers from because they get aggravated, but I will tell you that our advertising program, which you may have seen during the Christmas holidays, has been very effective. March 8th is our International Women's Day event, and in the interest of time, I thank you for letting me make my comments and ask if you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Do my colleagues have questions?
I have a question. You mentioned, I think, space 134 in what, am I correct, the cap, the freeway? Was that, or you were talking about the?
The Bridgeline.
The blockway?
Yeah.
Oh, the bridge and the planters that are going in there?
Yes, council member.
Okay.
Yes.
I want to, I appreciate your comments on our staff and how hard they work hand-in-hand with you. My question is for Ani, actually, because there's a program that we've had in the past where council members have gone to the businesses with Ani and other staff members to let them know exactly how the city can help. And I just wanted to ask Ani if there's any plans, and do you know about that program, Rick?
Well, she's coming up. If I could just make a comment.
Absolutely.
First of all, every business I've ever known gets excited when a council member comes in. They just do. They like to know that everybody in the city cares, and I think they know that you care, but seeing you face-to-face makes a difference. I want to remind you all that, in the long run, we help individuals, business owners. But our job first and foremost is, by law, to focus on property owners. We are a property owners' community benefit district. Now, we make it our business to help the tenants, because ultimately, many of them have a pass-through. But they are, we are a property owners' district, so we have to walk that fine line.
Thank you, council member Devine and members of city council, mayor. We did start rebooting the program, and we will be extending the invites to you in the next month or so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Council member Asatryan.
By any chance, do you know what percentage of the expenses that you have are allocated back to businesses in the city? So, for example, do you have a preference for, like, local hire, whether you're doing website? I'm just trying to see if there is a conscious effort.
Yeah, that is a very good question, and we can't. We are, by charter, we put everything out to RFP, and we have to choose the best price or most experienced. I will tell you this, having been the, one of the few board members, if not the only one, that's been with the district since its inception 10 years ago, we always try and entice businesses, we entice local businesses to bid, but for much of the services that we have provided, there are, not only are there no local businesses that do that, but they refuse to accept employment with us if we ask them to please focus on hiring Glendale folks. Oddly enough, few, if any, Glendale people are interested in a variety of things. For example, they don't want to do maintenance services, they don't, and they're very, very good-paying jobs, but we cannot get Glendale people to apply for custodial jobs, things like that. That's number one. Number two would be, we put a bid out for marketing. We just completed a bid for events, and we always, as we try and do for all of our members, we go for the most qualified, but frankly, because we're spending our own assessed dollars, we go for the most efficient, the record of success. We're not what I would call a training organization. We don't have that level of experience, that depth of experience. And our board members are all volunteers as well.
Okay.
So, for example, we don't hire anybody that may be able to get hired by, for example, the Glendale Galleria or Caruso, because we don't have, we don't do a training program. We go for companies that, and by the way, most of what we do is maintenance. That's the lion's share of our budget.
Well, I mean, I wasn't suggesting a training program. I was just wondering how much of the funding here goes back to our local businesses that may be qualified, and I was trying to understand your process.
I would say, you know, maybe for newspaper advertising or nonprofits like Ascencia, we work with them, but we wouldn't do business with anybody solely because they're located in the district. Our charter really doesn't allow that.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I'm continually impressed at the condition of Brand Boulevard. It is, you know, I looked to find gum wrappers, and I just can't, can't find it. And I think it's, and I'm not complimenting you. Don't get that big smile on your face.
It's not, it's not me doing the weird. I'm just very proud of the people that work so hard.
What do you call them, the ambassadors?
They're ambassadors.
They do a hell of a job, I got to tell you. You know, all through the day, assisting people, I see them helping with parking, you know, our parking meters are a little bit, take a little bit of practice.
You gotta learn them a little bit, yeah.
And, you know, through rain and hot weather, they're very nicely dressed with the khakis, and they do a hell of a job. I got to tell you that. That's, I'm very impressed with their dedication, and whoever you're hiring and training, it is very much noticed.
Yeah, on their behalf, because you're absolutely right. I don't do any of the hard work. On their behalf, I thank you, because they came into Glendale in a strange way. What I mean by that is, they were experienced in the maintenance business, but we told them that we wanted it different here. For example, in the summertime, they have to remove their glasses, look somebody in the eye and say, "Welcome to Glendale." There's just, and there's somebody, the checks on them regularly throughout the day. In Glendale, in addition to regular cleaning, they carry a, I guess like a putty knife, and they make sure the gum is taken off the sidewalk and other things. Little things like that that make it better here. They also have to be equipped to give directions. And the reason why, and a lot of people who are not familiar with the district from the beginning wouldn't know this, there was a safety element to our ambassadors giving directions to businesses. Before our ambassadors hit the street, people would stop police officers and ask them how we get to a business. And what we learned from the police chief in the year before the district was formed, so that's 11 years ago, come up with a way that our police officers are not asked to give people directions so they can spend time fighting crime or whatever else they do, usually ticket people like me. So on their behalf, I thank you very, very much. They do an extraordinary job, and we're known throughout the state as a very, very successful district.
All right, council member Brotman.
Just to echo what council member Najarian said, I love the work you do, and I enjoy working, walking up and down Brand. It's always really a nice experience. I've got one peeve, which I don't really know if it has to do with you, but it happens to be on Brand, and that is this encroachment on the sidewalk, and particularly in front of Tavern on Brand and Carousel, where you really, the sidewalk's been taken over. And I don't know, I've raised it with Mr. Calvert, and I guess staff is going to look into this, but if you see, if you, you know, you want to go where, in that area where Carousel is, it's all blocked off. You can't, you can't get down the sidewalk. And then if you go Tavern on Brand, they've got tables kind of right in the middle, and on the left, and on the right as you're, as you're, you know, you're moving through that. And it's just, I think it's something we need to take care of.
Yeah, I can tell you this, as you may imagine, we have little or no authority whatsoever. We make suggestions and things like that, but I will tell you this, there is a solution that's in process, and that is, we're working with community development to come up with more formal outdoor dining. We're a big believer in outdoor dining for a lot of reasons, but the main reason is it's the one-way businesses can catch up to what they lost during COVID. And in most cases, because it's outdoor dining, they're not paying rent per square foot for that outside dining. So as a district, we're really glad to have that happen. I give credit to Mr. Calvert in that he's been sharing with us plans where we can come up with more consistent-looking outdoor, which, when it goes in, it takes into account that there has to be space on the sidewalks for disabled access, which is a big deal to me, first and foremost. There's other people that have to pass, too, but when you give that four feet, things are a lot better. That's number one. Number two, when they all look alike, one doesn't try and encroach more than the other, so they have more seats. So I do believe there is, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Calvert, but I can tell you, there is a solution that is very, very close. We've been discussing it now for about 13 months, and I would say, I would expect to see the first inklings of that in, by spring, and where we're, the model that we're exposed to is what they've accomplished up in Montrose. So that gives you something concrete that, again, I'm an over-the-top believer in staff. They do, I work with a lot of cities, and this is, this is more of a joy than a chore, for sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lemmo. All right, with that, there's a motion, and if anyone would like to make a motion to accept the Greater Downtown Glendale Association's annual report and 2023 budget?
I'm moving.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and before we take a vote, I would just like to thank Mr. Lemmo and say that you don't have to come up, it's fine. We will be rolling out, by this council's approval, QR codes for our parking meters, and I'm sure it'll be rolled out into downtown. Just be sure to let your ambassadors know of that and work with the city through our Public Works Department and our traffic or transportation and parking people to make sure that we let folks know how that's used when they see those QR codes on the coin-operated meters, which will also be coming up to Montrose, I hope. So with that, let's have a roll call, please. Council member Asatryan.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kasakian. Yes, thank you. Let us now go to item number two.
Community development regarding Montrose Shopping Park Business Improvement District Annual Work Plan Budget for Calendar Year 2023. A motion to accept Montrose Shopping Park Association 2023 budget.
Mr. Dawson has been waiting patiently. Mr. Dawson, would you like to say anything, or would you like us to just take action on this? It's your preference.
Well, never your pleasure.
All right, Ms. Ani, would you like to come up and tell us what great things have been happening in Montrose?
Of course, of course. Good afternoon again, mayor and members of city council. Before your review this afternoon is the Montrose Shopping Park Association's work plan and calendar year 2023 budget. With the pandemic behind us, many of the iconic Montrose Shopping Park events will return in 2023, attracting and increasing foot traffic to the area. Popular events that will be restored include the Valentine's Day Flower Cart, Montrose Spring Wine Walk, Kids and Quitters Day, and the Montrose Car Show. Economic development has had the pleasure to actively participate in discussions with the association during its monthly meetings to offer support and assistance that is requested by the board. The board has submitted a detailed expense and revenue report for 2023 totaling $450,000 in revenue from key events and assessments. Now, I would like to introduce Dale Dawson, event coordinator of the Montrose Shopping Park Association, who will provide highlights related to their work plan and budget. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you, Ani. Mr. Mayor, city council, good to be here, good to see you again. We came through finally a year where all of our on-street activity was completely restored. Every event came back, in some cases, absent for almost three years. And the result is we're bringing people to town in a massive way. Both of the wine walks sold out. The Arts and Crafts Festival was completely booked and will be again this year. It's almost booked now, and it's not until June. So the response to our events, which is designed to drive foot traffic into the shopping park, is working very, very well. The other things along the way that we do, you have them in your handout there, we're concerned with, obviously, the beautification, the maintenance. One item that kind of caught us by surprise this fourth quarter was the change in the venue for the MSBA headquarters slash GPD substation, which is now seeking a new home. And we have been attempting to get on the same page with the Glendale Police Department in terms of what they want to see happen. We've explored a number of possibilities. As you may know, the Montrose Shopping Park Association has historically fully funded the rent and the utilities for that substation. And so we have put a number in our budget, but based on what's happening today with the size of available buildings and the rental rates and so forth, we're anticipating that could maybe be half of what's needed. We still don't have an answer from GPD on whether or not they intend to co-fund it. We'd love to know that. So anything council can do to help us to move that forward, because we firmly believe that the presence of the police department in the shopping park is very important for so many reasons, including security and just community service. So we're desperately trying to resettle them in a new venue. Other than that, that was the one surprise we got in the fourth quarter. Buildings sell, some of the buildings that have been owned by the same people for many, many decades, sell at some very high prices sometimes, and the rental rates fluctuate wildly in some cases. But we don't have a lot of vacancies. The ones that we have are being sought after. We have new businesses coming in. We've got a cheese shop now. We have an acai bowl shop now, things that I had never heard of before. So things are moving along nicely, and as I say, our events are driving the people into the shopping park.
Thank you. I'm smiling because I know you've probably heard of cheese shops, but I know what you meant, and you'll love the acai. It's great.
I already do. My wife made me buy some from Costco, and she's making it into smoothies.
We love, we love everything that's happening up in Montrose. It's been wonderful to see the community come out and support. I feel like every event that I've been to that has been back after the COVID hiatus is back in full force. People are definitely hungry for that communal interactions. Do my colleagues have any comments?
I just want to say that I think we're really lucky to have the Shopping Park Association doing, you know, your thing up there, and having the Greater Downtown Glendale Association doing theirs downtown, just to bring vibrancy and people into our community. Do we have any kind of an update on the Glendale Police Station up there?
Mr. Mayor, member city council, council member Devine, this is the first I hear about the need for a co-location, and I will follow up with the chief said on them.
Okay, great, great. And do you have any information on hats and gowns and when that's going to open? I mean, I just am lost without it.
That is one of the biggest mysteries in town. It just, no one is talking, no one knows.
Okay.
We have nothing.
Okay, all right.
That's not the Faze space, is it?
Pardon?
Faze, does anyone know?
Faze, Faze, it was, the whole corner building from the jewelry store Executive Jewellers all the way around to the alley, Montrose Lane with the Montrose Barbershop, that was the building that my shop was in, and was when Pat Grant passed away, and her children sold the building.
Sure.
For a rather hefty price. And so rental-wise, I had to make a move. I couldn't afford to stay there. The shopping park board at that time, based on the rental rate that the new building owner was requiring, refused to set a precedent in the park at a rate that high, which was way above market. It was felt that if the board sanctioned it, it would hurt other retailers down the road. So the shopping park at that point decided not to renew its lease, so we've been looking for a new spot ever since. This all just happened in September, October.
Well, you know, whether from the shopping park or from staff, if we find out what's going in there, inquiring minds want to know.
I haven't been able to get an answer on that, Mr. Mayor, and I've asked the building owner directly, who's coming in? Oh, it's somebody that has 200 locations around the world, and they're this and that, and they've applied to the city, and I don't know who they've talked to. I have no clue.
Okay, well, we'll do some digging around, too. We'll try to find out. Anyone else have any comments? Council member Brotman?
A couple, just to say firstly that, you know, the Montrose Shopping Park is such an asset to the city. Everybody knows about it, and it's well-loved. I have two, two things. One, I know there was a lot of nervousness about losing. One, I know there was a lot of nervousness about losing parking when those parklets went in. How's it been?
Well, we redefined the situation, got rid of the K-rails, and working with Mr. Calvert and his team, came up with, I think, one of the nicest-looking outdoor dining parklets anywhere around. I often, in the summer, I go to the city of Ventura, and it looks absolutely disjointed. So, what we have now, I think, is working well. We're still in the process of settling in with those restaurants that are using those places exclusively and coming up with a plan to make sure that the city is compensated for its parking, and all of those things take place, but it's working rather well.
Okay. So, so far, no negative impacts, no complaints, people aren't able to get to the places they need to go. I know there was, I know a couple people up there, a couple of the merchants had a lot of concern.
They did at first.
Yeah.
But as I say, we pared down the number of them and really redefined it very, very well, and I think it's working well.
Okay. The only other thing, and there's another one that's maybe more on us than on you, but that intersection where Faze is, you know, that intersection, the landscaping there, I, for a while now, have been getting a lot of complaints about how it's just all dirt. And I know we did have a conversation, I think our parks people had a conversation with you guys about re-landscaping. Where are we with that? I still think it's not, hasn't been done, right?
It hasn't been done. I haven't heard back. What we were trying to do is, I think, through the Parks Department, get an exception made for a couple of key venues so that watering could still take place, so that irrigation could still take place, but they had to be designated recreational and not just pedestrian-oriented. This is something, apparently, that's kind of a loophole to get past. We were looking to try to retain some beautification for the corner, the southeast corner in front of Starbucks, the northwest corner where the War Memorial is, and also the grassy area in front of the avenues. Those are the three that we had hoped to retain, but I haven't heard the progress on that.
Okay. Can we, can we make sure that we look into this, Mr. Galanian? Just to take care of that, because it's been a very long time, and it's just been dirt, and it really is kind of an eyesore.
Yes, we'll follow up with our community service and Parks Department.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to comment or make a motion?
I'll move the item.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
May we have a roll call, please? Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Councilmembers Asatirian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kassakian.
Yes, thank you very much. Let's go to item number three.
Item three is Community Development Regarding Use of City Day at the Alex Theater Artsakh Benefit Concert. A motion to approve use of one of 12 annual city days at the Alex Theater for Artsakh Benefit Concert on Sunday, February 26, 2023.
Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. As acknowledged and as you're aware, as part of our new management agreement with SAS for the Alex Theater, we are allocated as a city 12 days for special events. If you recall, just a couple of months ago, we had given an update on the Alex Theater, and we discussed some of those potential uses and kind of the process. So, this is really our first time doing this, coming to the City Council to obtain your permission, your consensus around how we use these days. We were recently approached by SAS, the management company, and they would like to essentially host and put on their own benefit concerts in response to the conflict in Artsakh right now. They have done other events previously. Some of these, most of these, if I'm not mistaken, actually have taken place through other organizations, and essentially, they've offered a discounted rate to use the theater to throw these benefit concerts or benefit shows. In this case, SAS is actually choosing to put this show on themselves. The intent behind this is to raise money. The charity that they have identified is the Children of Armenian Fund. This is really to work on kind of social and speech therapy for those who are affected right now by the blockade, children who are three and up. The proceeds from that show would go towards that. The city would only be responsible for the labor cost. That is part of the agreement, one of those 12 days that we would be utilizing, the city does cover the labor cost of the event. That's approximately just a little over $10,000. We're very excited about this, as acknowledged in the opening there. This would be held on February 26 of 2023. We actually have a short video that highlights those that will be performing as part of this. A number of these performers have actually attempted to try to have shows at the Alex Theater previously. Didn't quite work out, but now we do have that opportunity and to bring it on a very notable and worthwhile event. So, if we could play the short video here. And SAS and their team will be working to market this event, recognizing the importance of arts and culture, and really in response, Mayor Kassakian, as you're aware, when the delegation from Artsakh visited and we learned of some of the needs. In addition to this, there's going to be equipment that is going to be swapped out with the Alex Theater as a update, and the intent here is to send some of that equipment, what's still usable, as well as training, to the theater in Marduni so that hopefully they can get that rebooted and used. So, we are asking council's permission this afternoon to use one of these 12 days for this benefit concert on February 26 of 2023.
Thank you very much. Who would like to make a motion?
Oh, I just want to make a comment. I just think it's fantastic that SAS has taken the lead on this particular event. You know, this shows that they are willing to work with our community and be supportive of our community, and it is, obviously, for a very worthy cause. So, I would, oh, and all the ticket proceeds, I want to make sure everybody knows, all the ticket proceeds will go to the children's fund, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. So, I would love to move the item.
I'd just like to applaud SAS and their incentive for doing this. There was some criticism by the prior, by supporters of the prior management that this was not a community-involved management group, referring to SAS, but this really, I think this is great. I'm glad that they went and did this on their initiative with, working with the community members.
Okay.
I'll second you. Did you move the item? Yeah, I'll second.
Did you make the motion? Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Brotman, and again, challenges continue. For those who are watching who aren't aware, there's an ongoing blockade of any type of humanitarian movement, supplies, food, medicine into Artsakh, and including our sister cities, which are at risk right now because they're cut off from the rest of the world. When Lerni Kovanisyan, the Deputy Minister of Culture, was here, and we asked him, what is it that there's most of a need for, and they said, "Well, you know, we have a theater, a community theater in Marduni that was damaged during the war. We would love to replace the equipment. If you have any spare, you know, used equipment, we would be grateful for it." And I think, you know, people from staff, as well as the Alex, have come together and come up with a solution now. The thing is, once we have this concert, we hope that the blockade will end, so we'll be able to get this equipment to Armenia and then eventually to our sister city in Marduni. So, thank you for making the motion, Councilmember Devine, and Councilmember Brotman for seconding it. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatirian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kassakian.
Yes. And with that, we have no other items for the special agenda, for special meeting. We'll come back with the item number one, which we moved off of today's agenda. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.